Go ahead and please call to order for the... Actually, if we could just take a moment just to reflect, we lost one of our fellow councilmen recently. And it's one of those, you don't really realize how well sometimes you know a person or don't know a person until that person is gone. And then you realize what you had and what you lost. And I know what really made me think is he was a true defender of the airport authority, and that was kind of what he really cared about. And tonight, we will open with the airport authority, but he will be sorely missed. And it's sad to see him go. If we could go ahead and please open with the airport authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the airport authority? Under current business, consideration possible action regarding a ground lease for Enviro Systems at the airport. I think this is the picture that you see here with the title, survey, and all of that. And I think everyone also has a copy of the ground lease. Is there anything special on this, Steve, that we should know, not know?
Okay, they're mirroring this right. This is Enviro or is this the airport?
It is. Oh, this is here, airport.
Okay.
This is Enviro. This is the Hucklehorn.
Okay. That's what I thought.
It's the old highway.
And this is the area of the East Smith, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anything in particular that you think we need to know, not know, bring to our attention, that there are concerns or... Steve?
Stand by.
Oh.
This is new.
Oh.
This is yours, right, Jay?
Mm-hmm.
It's all basically what it was.
Okay.
Okay. No, sir. It looks good.
And it's pretty much the same standard link, lease length and all of that, as far as the 10 consecutive terms of five years and all that, starting 2024 and all of that.
Yes. Basically, all this does is just to cover that different description.
Is that a motion on your part, sir?
I'll move to approve.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
I'll shake.
Can I get a roll call on that, please, Jay?
Jeff Griffin.
Upstain.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Upstain.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Notice of regular meeting Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no consider... There's no items removed from the consent agenda. Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the gas authority? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Roll call... Or, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now calling to order the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda? Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If we could call to order the Seminole City Council meeting? Roll call, please, Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
Our... We have a quorum.
If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, if you can kind of make the music play, please.
Remembering Terry this evening. Oh, Lord, support us all the day long until the shadows lengthen, the evening comes, and the busy world is hushed, and the fever of life is over. In a mercy, then, grant us a safe lodging, a holy rest, and peace at the last. Amen.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the city council meeting? Under approvals and acceptances, bids, consideration possible action to approve the low bid of $53,760 from Merritt Tennis and Tracks Systems for refurbishment of the municipal tennis courts. This is a budgeted item to be funded from the general fund, CIP Parks Department.
And is this for all of them?
This is for the four by in the municipal park by the splash pad.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration possible action to approve the low bid of $24,064 from Hertz Equipment for a new Deucen air compressor, anger saw, rand, one-inch impact and three-quarter inch impact. This is a budgeted item to be funded from Series 2010 revenue non-bonded proceeds. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, number three, consideration possible action regarding the ground lease for Enviro Systems at the airport.
Move to approval.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Upstain.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Upstain.
Motion passes.
Number four, consideration possible action regarding selection of a logo for use on the Highland Standpipe Water Tower.
You will recall that we are just about to start the sandblasting on our Highland, the huge water tank that we got over by the Heritage House. I was not going to take it upon myself to reinstall the logo that is currently on there. I thought this would be worthy of some council discussion. I think Ladonna put it in your packet. The logo that we chose to go with on the north side is not the same. And I didn't know if you wanted me to go back with the same logo that we've got on there, which is... I don't know if it has a historic relevance or anything of that nature, but give me your input. If we want to go back with what we've got, we can certainly do that. The one on the north side is also attractive, in my opinion.
Well, I've got something to say about that. I love the chieftain head. I've had the chieftain head on a very old cheerleading uniform, and it is old, but I like that. However, I was looking at this arrowhead design, and I thought, you know, that looks like it's pointing to the future. And I'm ready for Seminole to do some new and exciting things, and I'm ready for Seminole to be once again infamous across the state for a great place for businesses and for a nice community to raise your family. So, I know it's just a logo, but to me, that is a pointing to the future.
Along with that thinking, you know, we... I wish we could recognize our people. I don't know how we would do that, but we have the most generous people in Seminole. When we need something, they all come to us. And I don't know how you recognize them. Maybe it's a whole lot generous people. I don't know. Neighbor helping neighbor, whatever. But it's something to consider, because I'm telling you, we've got a great community here, and it's because of the people.
Just a point of history, the chieftain head that's on that water tower. When the water tower was first built, that chieftain head was painted by a young boy from Shawnee, Oklahoma, who was 18 years old, and took the summer to paint that head. He is now, at the last time I checked, was the Methodist minister in Altus, Oklahoma. You know, I didn't ask a lot, but I asked a few people around about what they'd like to see, and they liked the chieftain head. They liked the way it looks, and they had said they would really like to have that back on. Again, that's not a huge sample, that's just a few, but that was the feedback I received when I asked some of our citizens.
Let me ask you another question about this. The one we've got now, and it shows, you know, the antennas, and it looks like a... some kind of bracket and stuff. Then the second picture shows kind of a fin... I mean, a thing, a funnel. It looks like a funnel top. Is the new one... I mean, are we putting that on there?
The structure itself will not change. We're only painting it.
Well, see how this is different? That funnel-looking thing is different from...
Yes.
Yeah. So we're not... I mean, it won't look like that. It won't have this... that on.
No. No.
And it's the same water tower, it'll just be painted.
The antennas that are on top are subleased out to other entities, and so that part won't
change.
Change. Right. Okay.
Have we happened to have, from the Seminole Nation, any input, or if they had any feelings one way or the other towards using the chieftain head on the water tower?
No, sir. I've not had any input from them.
And so are you looking for kind of a vote today to see which way we go with painting the water tower?
Uh, yes.
If...
When will they be ready to do that? They... It'll be a little while, but they're ready to get the thing stenciled in and...
We met today, and issue a notice proceed, so they're gonna have to have the stencil made immediately, or start working on it, especially if it's that, if the chieftain head.
The few people I've talked to also, Jeff, has said that they would like to see the old chieftain logo saved, because it's just kind of been there.
Think you can add to it, pick up something else.
Right. Did everybody hear that? It can be added, too, if you chose to do something.
Well, I don't think we can go wrong. Either one is good.
So can we do something? I'm like Dee Dee. I mean, we have a wonderful bunch of citizens in this town. Is there something we can... Some idea we can come up with to maybe honor them with the chieftain on there, or something? Some wording, or some phrase, or something for our community?
You want like a saying under it?
No.
Like a community that cares, or a community that helps, or...
Did we put that on our website?
Where wow happens.
Yeah.
Where wow happens.
People making wow happen. That's on our website.
Okay?
I'll go with your idea, Mayor. I like yours much better. That's why we have votes, right, Mike?
I don't have a problem with the other one, per se. But, I mean, we can put whatever you want. I understand what you're saying, you know? Whether it be like just adding, you know, Seminole pride, to... You know, and what, you know, does that carry the... I'm proud of the community. I help the community. I do what? You know, that would be the, I think, the simplest, yet very volumous thing to place, whether it be a slogan, you know, a community that comes together, or whatever, you know, slogan you want to put on there. Is that something that could be added as well at a later date? And by later date, I just mean, you know, in a month or two, or the next time we meet, or if Steve comes up with something as far as that goes? Because, I mean, they still have to start painting this thing.
The lettering's easy.
Okay.
It's the...
The chieftain.
The part where it's difficult. The lettering, they already have it stenciled.
Okay.
Depending on the font you want.
Sure, sure.
But the chieftain head was too difficult.
I don't know if you could get our Methodist friend to come back from Altus and repaint it. That was years ago. Yeah. That's... What's on there now is significantly smaller than what he had painted. I know that.
Can I take that as a motion to go back with the chieftain head?
Go back with the chieftain, and maybe later on add a, you know, phrase or whatever, too.
Do I have a second for that?
One second.
Can we get a roll call on that, please, Jay?
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consideration possible action to approve declaring as an emergency the replacement of signal lights at the intersection of Strather and Milk Phillips, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to proceed with replacing the lights at a cost not to exceed $115,000. This is a non-budgeted item to be funded from 92 general funds, special projects.
I have two things to say about that. The stop signs, stop the trucks, and slow them down. The other question I have, are we totally responsible for that as a city? That's a state and federal highway. Are they not responsible for some of that?
I don't think so, unless Paul Rachel's decided to chip in some. I don't... I think they would look at it as they're functional now. They would probably help with new installation. You may recall back to the discussions that we had with them on the Harvey Road and Strathers. We had requested that they help us with that, and in effect, what they were saying was, we haven't had enough injury accidents out there for them to participate. We could arrange for that.
Do we get the...
Well, I can understand that part, because that was dedicated to the city originally, and I don't think that's... Even though it's 270, I guess, bypass. Is that correct?
Yes.
Harvey Road?
Yes.
But this is a major highway coming through the center of our town. It seems to me that they should be involved and be responsible for something in regards to that.
They are. They are involved, yes, so far as taking attitude.
Yeah. They make us comply with the Uniform Traffic Code, but they're not... They're not gonna chip in any money. I do have to say one thing, though, and I'm... Second's what Dee Dee said. With the four-way stop sign, it's a lot safer. I'd almost say, leave the four-way stop sign.
No, no, no.
You don't... You're not as likely to get hit.
Might encourage it to get us a bypass.
You know, the county's not paying 11,500.
Right.
So the 11,500 would come off with the lesser quota, which is gonna bring it down to a reasonable.
Okay.
And this will be with cameras, and we don't have the engineer of not changing anything. If we go to changing anything, the signal stations, then we have to go get an engineer when we're talking.
Well, there again, Mike, they're telling you how to do it, but they're not involved any other way. That doesn't sound right to me. It seems to me that they should be responsible, along with the city, to do something.
We did 999. You know, we spent well over $300,000 to... And they first engineered.
So this would be lights that's not on timers no more, and actually has a pressure pad?
With cameras.
Cameras, okay.
Cameras will detect.
Detect, okay.
What's going on. If there's no traffic present, it'll stay north and south.
In other words, if no cars are coming, it will be green going through all the time. Is that correct? If a car approaches, it's gonna be...
With the trucks coming, I'd almost say set it east and west.
I only have one question as far as technicalities.
I don't like trucks.
Does this need to be separated to where you also vote on the emergency portion of it? I do know because it is for people's safety and all that, we can easily get the emergency clause done, but doesn't it have to be two separate items?
Yeah, it's two votes. You can leave it one agenda item, but two votes to declare it emergency.
Do I have a motion? Yes, sir?
It's still gonna be, I believe, nine to 12 weeks, Steve, out. Even if we place the order tomorrow, it's still gonna be nine to 12 weeks out before we can...
Yeah, but you don't want to wait another month where you still have nine to 12 weeks.
Right.
Gotcha.
Also, Steve, I want another question on that. As far as, when they asphalted the road, you said that now we have, you know, we've had some of our lights hit because of trucks, you know, some of the haul, big stuff they haul through here?
Yes, sir.
Did they ever change any of that, or to stipulate that those... The road has changed heights or something? Surely they got... Do they have anything that says that?
They being ODOT?
Yes. I mean, they're the ones that changed the height of the road.
Not that I'm aware of. One of the things that I've talked to one of the companies about is going to... Instead of having the vertical lights that we hang, they chain them to the arm. We may look at going to the vertical, or the...
Horizontal?
Yeah, the horizontal, excuse me, the horizontal system, so that at least we're getting another 12 inches of height out of that. That'd probably have to be approved through ODOT, but it stands to reason to me that it would cause less damage when it happens.
And also, as far as a camera, the camera is just for the light system, or is there a camera that can also watch that intersection? Like through 911 or something?
Sure, they have it. Ask for that, you're close.
Yeah, we don't have it plugged into any Wi-Fi system that's gonna beam it anywhere. Right now, it would only be for traffic control. Unless you tell me otherwise, we don't have any intention of writing traffic tickets for running red lights.
No, and that's not what I was talking about, just...
Also, Gary, any load that exceeds 18 foot is supposed to go around, that's permitted. They're supposed to go around. Downboard, back in, instead of going through Seminole.
That's some pretty good-sized stuff goes down that road.
And they're supposed to call, contact the police, and there's a lot of stipulations to go along with that permit when they get it.
Yeah.
A lot of people, a lot of the trucking companies, they do follow the regulations, but it's a lot of them.
Yeah.
A lot.
Do I have a motion for replacement of the signal lights to start with?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
If I could also please get a motion for the emergency clause associated with that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson? Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Gary Howe?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number six, consideration possible action to approve granting the city manager authority to purchase anywhere from twelve to twenty-one streetlights from Voss Lighting at a cost unit of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ten cents, or a total not to exceed the amount of forty thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and ten cents, contingent upon being awarded the Certified Health Communities Grant Fund from the TSET Board at its November thirteenth, two thousand and fourteenth meeting.
Carol, would you mind explaining the rush on this?
Well, we might get the lights up before next year, but it takes several weeks to order the lights, and they only meet quarterly usually, and so this is their last meeting for this year, so that's the grant every year.
Is there any problem where we might not get the grant?
I guess that's always possible. We don't, we're not very familiar with how the, uh, Tobago Settlement Board works. You know, we don't have any history with him, so we don't know for sure. But, um, I have every reason to believe we'll get twenty-six thousand and probably the full fifty thousand for the grants.
Good.
If we don't, though, do we have a backup plan?
You just spin it.
In other words, we don't get the grant while we're voting here, though, it's contingent upon that.
That's right.
Yes. If we don't get the grant, it'll come back to us, right?
Okay, that's correct.
I move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Gary Howe?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under reports, city manager?
Uh, yes, uh. I just wanna personally thank the veterans, all the veterans that have served, and, uh, this, my heart goes out to the families that have lost people, uh, through the years and in our wars and, and elsewhere, and just remember them today. Um, I also wanna say that I'm proud of our line crews that are doing the line installations. Uh, Bill and his crew have been over, uh, north of Strather for several weeks now. And, uh, it's been challenging for them as they repair a huge, well, it's a huge job. The sewer line itself is not all that huge, but, uh, he's got to work with surgeon's skill with that new trackhoe to get through all the telephone lines, et cetera, et cetera. And still leave some of the fences up that have built over the alleyway. So, uh, we're finding new things. Uh, we found a few things we didn't know were there that were never marked, and, uh, in particular, one thing I wanna advise you of is, uh, some of the issues that are coming up with CenterPoint. Uh, right now, it's, it's, it's friendly, uh, but CenterPoint has been marking their, their gas lines when we do these line replacements, and frankly, they're leaving some of their lines unmarked, and we run into those lines occasionally. And, uh, they've complained about it, and, uh, you know, the, the truth of the matter is, when we do a call okey and they come out and mark the lines, they're telling us, if you stay away from this mark, you're gonna be fine. So, there is a point where it may be contentious. Right now, it is not, but I wanted to advise you in advance that we may get into a situation where we're cross with them a little bit. Uh, clearly, we've got to start replacing these lines. That's, you knew that when you allowed us to go forward with this project, and it's gonna be great for our citizens in the future. Uh, you, you, if you've driven down Strather near the Wellness Center, you've seen the Christmas lights going up. Uh, things are going well there. I, I wanna pat my guys on the back. Uh, they're doing a fantastic job, and I'm including Sharon's staff and my guys. Uh, they're, they're the ones that organize it, and our other guys do the labor, so, uh, it's been going well. Uh, along those lines, the lights will be turned on on November the twentieth. And prior to that, we will have a Hall of Fame ceremony and a sampling of Seminole where we've got fourteen?
Twelve committed.
Twelve committed restaurants, that, and many more that may commit uh, to bringing samples of their specialties to this event. Uh, tickets are available for twenty-five dollars adults and ten dollars, uh, for children. They're available at Seminole Producer and Carol's office. Um, this year's nominee, or the inductees for the Hall of Fame are Don Gill and Jack Mattingly Senior. And we'd love to have you there on November the twentieth from six to seven-thirty or so.
The Hall of Fame starts at seven-thirty.
Okay, Hall of Fame starts at seven-thirty, and immediately following that was when we'll turn on the lights at the Snowman Wonderland. Uh, Thursday, December the sixth, is the Chocolate Festival and Holiday Bazaar. And that's from ten AM to eight PM. Christmas Parade, uh, is also on that night, Seminole Main Street at six forty-five. And the Employee Christmas Dinner has been set, and I'm drawing a blank. Does anybody?
Nineteenth.
Uh, December the nineteenth. Well, that's late. So, December the nineteenth, we'll have plenty of time to talk about that at the next council meeting. Um, I, I mentioned the website earlier. Sharon's staff, Shelley on the, on her staff has designed our new website. It is up and going, uh, it's been turned on, and I would encourage you to go and look at what's been done thus far. Done a fantastic job. I'm really proud of her, and, uh, she spent a lot of time getting it just right, so. Uh, if you see things, we, we thought we had it proofread, but as always, in those types of deals, you always find something that could be done differently or more correctly, so, uh, let us know. We're, we're easy to work with, so. Lastly, uh, I would just tell you on, on a personal issue, and I think perhaps it's, it's bleeding into my professional life. Um, you all know that I've been passionate about a new high school. And, uh, I wanna, I want you to know that I've been very careful in trying to separate my professional, my city manager's uh, job from my personal opinions in a new high school. Uh, I think with all the Facebook traffic and things that have been spun on this, that, uh, my ability to promise things, quote unquote, uh, from a city standpoint, has been drawn into question. I wanna assure you that I have not promised anything, nothing. Uh, I have provided my opinion, and that's it. Uh, that, and I'm doing that as a father of students at, at Seminole Public Schools. And, um, I'm, I still am passionate about it. I think it's critical to advance our community that we've got to have a new school. That's the next step, moving forward for the future, as you said a while ago. A, a new high school speaks volumes. I think all of us have driven by a community, whether it's Ufala or Durant, and seen their new high school shining out on a highway, and you automatically think that that community is prosperous and they care about education. You may never get off the highway and go in and see that it's not doing too well. But just the, the thought that hits you immediately is, this place is doing great. And so, I, I think that that is a big piece of where we're going, and, uh, I, you know, if, if I need to check myself, hopefully you'll tell me privately that, hey, this is something you probably need to back away from, cause it's bleeding into your professional uh, career. Uh, but for now, I intend to stay hooked in privately to what's going on and, and continue to push for a new public school. That's all I've got.
Susan Warren, uh, excuse me, Susan Warren. Word one, Susan Hammond?
Yes, I wanted to say that I consider uh, coming to a public meeting as a woman to be a real big privilege. You know, we see on the TV in the Middle East that ladies, women, are not appreciated, so we have freedom in this country to come discuss things, uh, cuss things, and, uh, talk about our opinions. And we owe that freedom and other freedoms that we have to our veterans. And today's Veterans Day, and, uh, we owe the men and women a great debt. And I get kinda teary, cause I love this country. It's the best country on the face of the earth. We have problems, but our veterans need, uh, appreciation and thanks, and we must never forget that.
Word one, Bill Wantland?
First of all, I just second what Susan just said. And I have to hark back to another thing that I periodically raise, and, and that is the railroad right-of-way, which is not being cleared. Now, I understand, am, am I correct, Steve, that the railroad has sold its right to that right-of-way to another group that's trying to complete the railroad this way?
No, sir, I'm not aware of that. I, eh.
Whoever's responsible for it, we need to get after them again, cause it's not being maintained. It's a, it's a nuisance and a hazard and a problem. And, uh, if it's our Northern Railroad, necessary, well, go after the president again with the Oklahoma Corporation Commission. Issue tickets, whatever it takes, but it does need to be cleaned up.
Okay.
Word two, Gary Howe?
Just like to thank the citizens, the staff, and I'm like Susan, we live in a great country. We have great veterans. We need to all respect all of them.
Word two, John Kramer?
I think it's all been said.
Word three, Jeff Griffin?
Well, I too, we'd like to thank our, our veterans and their families for the sacrifices that they made. Um, it's easy to take all the freedoms we have for granted. Uh, you know, some seem to be slowly slipping away, but, uh, we still have a lot. And, uh, a lot of times, we forget about those veterans, and we need to, uh, keep them in mind every day that we have the freedom to do the things that we did.
Word four, Chris Anson? Word four, DeeDee Patterson?
I sure miss seeing Terry over there. He, uh, was with us and with me on the cha, uh, the council for thirteen years. He was voted off on that recall, and it was unfair to him at the time. And he got his seat right back. But he will be missed. He was a great man. He did a lot of good things for us. Also, I, I don't know it's appropriate to say it here, but I saw a fundraiser, and I'm gonna pass it out for what it's worth, uh, of a community about the size of Seminole. And they had, uh, Main Street, uh, merchants making up the Christmas trees, decorating the Christmas tree, and they put it out and put it up for bid. And it's unbelievable how much money they, they raised by doing that. That's a great project. That would work here. People bought a decorated Christmas tree and took it home with them. Think about it.
The, the main thing I just wanna add to the end is, obviously, Susan's one hundred percent correct. This is the greatest country in the world, and it is with the veterans that are able to give us our freedoms. No freedom is free, and they're the ones that have paid the price. Um, unfortunately, never again will I ask word three Terry what his comments are for the day. Um, his passion about certain things will, will surely be missed. Um, and it is sad anytime you see someone go, and like DeeDee, I've been with them quite a while. I think twelve, twelve years, or fourteen, something in there. And, uh, it's, it's always sad to see people you, you see each month, and it's just odd when they are not here. Um, but otherwise, um, you know, just like it's said every week, you know, it's, it's the, the people of this town is what make it so great. That's why when it comes to the water tower, we do wanna somehow show that it, you know, the pride that we have, the whatever slogan we come up with, hopefully not the wow town, or the awe, or whatever it was, but.
If you want awe, we got it. That's not gonna work either.
Shock and awe had a whole different meaning back then. But with that, if, if I could get a motion for adjournment?
Mayor, real quick, uh, if, could Jake give you a couple of comments about the iPads that were passed out?
Each have your iPads, and in a few days, LaDonna will be calling you and offering assistance in helping setting it up, so. You're like me, your kids or grandkids do that, but for those of you that don't need it, you can just tell her then. Um, if there's any problem, and she'll come to your house or your place of business or wherever to make sure that you get connected to your Wi-Fi. So this should work, just like it's working now on your computer. We'll email it to you. Uh, for maybe a month or so, we'll keep the books simultaneously with the iPad to make sure, if it's comfortable with it. You wanna change it, the format, we've been trying to change that up to make it easier to scroll through. It'll be sort of like your phone, where you can just scroll. Um, we're open to suggestions. Um, I think that's about it. You have any questions, just give us a call.
You will have to have access to Wi-Fi to be able to download onto your iPad the agendas.
So you want us to go ahead and take these out?
Absolutely. Those are.
Get them charged up, play with them. Just, just play, and then when you hit a, hit a hurdle, call LaDonna and she'll come out and.
Is it, it's sent to us by email?
Uh, yes, I'll send it out. On your iPad, you should have an icon or something for an email, just like you would on your phone, for example, if you have a smartphone, or, um, but we'll, like I said, we will help you get that set up. I'm not sure, we send this now, I think, to your office staff, to their attention. Uh, and we can get with you and decide how you wanna do that.
And we're to delete it after our meeting, is that correct? It'll always be you.
Absolutely. One of the nice things about it.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.